Are we, we might want to put that on camera. Are we ready to roll back there? Okay. So we have Joey Merle and David.
We good?
Good.
So with this, I want to state, now I'll say, please say "I will," then the next one you would be after me. On that, so please, pretty nice, please. Now chop them up, real good. Um, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of Clinton City, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected. Please say "I will."
I will.
Please don't say "I don't." Uh, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Clinton City School Board of Education.
Of the Clinton City School Board of Education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I have been elected.
In which I am about to ascend.
In which I am about to ascend.
By the authority vested in me by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare these board members to be duly elected. Thank you and congratulations.
Joe Magister.
I do, can I say a couple words?
You can.
Yeah, I don't talk to people that much. I've got a lot to say.
Come on, come on, you're welcome.
First of all, I am not an AC fan. I got my gray and my blue on, but, but I'm going to a high school ballgame after this. But I did want to say real quick, the dog party is concerned that, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you all do. Um, I mean, this has been just, uh, uh, 2020 was just unbelievable year and, and we haven't slowed down yet, but hopefully we will. But, um, y'all have done some really good things. It's just, I think the city and the school board are very similar in many things, but, but specifically, everybody's on the same page. The teachers, the principals, the school board, Kelly and her staff. Y'all are lockstep, and I think that's one thing that makes you all so successful. And, um, as I've said before, my days are gone someday, that, um, I'll be very proud about the relationships that we've had across the board with, with all agencies that we deal with, but especially with, for the Clinton School System. So, again, I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it, and, and things will get better.
They will. The sun's gonna come up. Thank you so much. Go Blaze, we've got a game tonight, too.
Yeah, I had one more question. So does the athletic director, is he on the, does he give a report?
The athletic director, we try to limit the amount of face talking.
I was going to say, just in case, because I, I wanted to see that.
Thank you, Mayor Burton.
You ready? Want to call up, order the board meeting? We have the approval of agenda and our additions to the agenda. Hope everyone's looked over it. Any comments, questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. The motion passed. And we have the recognition of school board members.
So, um, on the week of January the 24th through the 30th is School Board Appreciation Week. We do this every, um, every January, and so at this time, I will call the principals up. They have something special for each one of our board members to show our deep appreciation. Um, I know that the pay that you receive is a definite incentive for you to stay on the school board at a whopping zero dollars per year. Um, but we do appreciate the time that you volunteer to do the good work, um, for Clinton City Schools. So at this time, I will have the principals come on up. Normally, we do like handshakes and hugs and all of that, but this time, we'll just set it, do a nice little wave and thank you and...
Uh, thank you. Uh, I've heard all about this. I'll get to read everyone up, because my granddaughter will make sure.
You'll give it to Jenna and tell Jenna to give it to the...
She told me, she told me all about it, so I'm ready to read. I've had to read all of it. We'll read it. Thank you.
Got a nice picture of my son here, if anybody wants to take a look.
Do we need to, do we need to zoom in on that?
Zoom in on it.
Uh, but we do appreciate, thanks to each of you. I've always said that one of our largest successes at Clinton City Schools is the support that this group, this group gives, the fact that we are able to make decisions in the best interest of kids, and you're always so supportive of our teachers and our staff, and we have a good thing going. And so I just really, really appreciate the support that, that you give. And I think all of the principals did you a favor this year. I don't think there's glitter, so you don't have to worry about taking home lots of glitter that you find. Oh, oh, so sorry, North Clinton, there's glitter.
No, this, that, the glitter was last year, it was insane.
Oh, last year, Megan, were you the person with the glitter?
Okay, we're now going to the consent agenda. Everybody looked over it? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. The motion passes. Financial report. I believe we go to you here.
Uh, everybody should have the November and December financial report. I'm gonna refer you to the December financial report that I handed to everyone paper. That incorporates November's, uh, data, so if we approve that, we're kinda de facto approving November as well. But, um, I'll draw your attention to just three items. The first item is gonna be your local option sales tax. If you look at what we actually collected in December, 143,000, and you look at what we have budgeted, is 1.4 million, 1.426. We're gonna go, we're gonna, our revenues will exceed our budget, and I've addressed that in a budget amendment, which is forthcoming. Uh, the second item in revenue would be, uh, your BEP, your, um, basic education program. We have budgeted 4.97 million. And we collected, uh, 496,000 in December. Usually, you use that collection times 10. We only get 10 months of BEP. So obviously, our BEP is gonna be slightly shy of what we have budgeted. I don't address BEP until we get our total growth and adjustments that come from the state. Uh, you can see, based on what we collected, uh, we're, if everything stays as it is now, we'll have 4.96 million, and we have budgeted 4.97 million. So it's very close. It's not worth doing a budget amendment until we get the final numbers. It's only a couple thousand dollars. If you turn the page, the only thing that should jump off the page is your 91-300, education capital projects. Were 378% spent, well over budget. The reason for that is, um, by law, when you engage in a capital project, you have to budget 100% of the capital project in the year that you begin the capital project, regardless if it's gonna span one, two, or even three years. And then you adjust accordingly in subsequent budgets. Well, we actually thought we would complete this project by June 30th, and you, as you all know, we ran into some issues, and issues ran into us with COVID. So we had to postpone a few things, thus the payment for the capital project wound up in this year. And I do have a budget amendment to address that as well. Uh, if you turn the page, um, capital, uh, sorry, federal projects. Federal projects is gonna start getting a little, uh, more detailed because of the several grants and awards that we're getting related to COVID. So I'm trying to, um, isolate those and report them separately. Uh, one, for disclosure, and two, just to keep track of it. There's a lot to keep track of. So, uh, the new things on here are your, uh, ESAR money, your COVID money of 158,000. People will call that ESAR 1.0. Um, there will be, uh, there already is an ESAR 2.0, which will probably be reflected next month. That's 158,000 budgeted. I've called that 931 is the federal fund. You know, we have a 101, a 201, a 905, a 915. Those are the standard ones we've used. So we're adding 931, and we've already received 87,000, so a bit more than half.
And just to clarify, that, the ESAR 1.0 grant money was the money that we received about 150-something thousand back at, in the end of the summer, right before school started. We have designated that to help us pay for Edgenuity, which is the online program that we're serving our virtual students from. So the majority of that money is going to, um, the virtual academy that we set up for our virtual learners. And then the remaining of that was used to purchase, um, at-home learning kits in case we had to go home, and different manipulatives for, um, the system to deal with both brick and mortar and virtual learning during this time.
There usually, uh, with a grant, there's a lot of strings attached. This one didn't have so many strings attached. It was very, I thought it was easy to deal with from a programming standpoint on our end. So they did, did a good job of that, I think the government did. Uh, 932 is your remote, remote technology grant. Uh, that's gonna be added in our budget amendment today, and it's already been spent, and it's already been paid. We've got our money. You can see, that's the last item on your revenues. Year-to-date actual is 29,884. That's the exact amount of the award.
And that was spent reimbursing, that was a reimbursement for, uh, one-to-one devices. And so we received, I think, $300 for every three devices that we purchased. And so that's where the 29,000, so it helped offset some of those costs.
And then 933 is, uh, they, reopening program, programmatic support, 40,000. And again, uh, that'll be reflected in a budget amendment. We've spent it, and we've also been reimbursed, uh, for that amount. And that's for the speaker systems, for the teachers in the classrooms. That 40,000 didn't cover the entire cost, but it covered more than half. So it was definitely helpful. The other grants are, are, not much has changed. Uh, there's some budget amendments to reflect, um, allocation changes, carryforward changes, um, and some slight grant changes and, and, uh, transfers among grants. But nothing out of the ordinary compared to prior years. Turn the page for cafeteria. Turn your attention, year-to-date actual, which is the second column. Go to the very bottom, 5,332 is our surplus at December 30th. So we're, we're on track to, to stay with that. That should grow every year. Generally speaking, our commodities, which is about 35,000 dollars, is what we receive from the government. The government actually pays for the hamburgers, let's say. That is what we should have as profit, barring any major capital expenditure in ovens and steamers and things like that. Um, and that's where we were about la, last year, is kinda where we landed.
And they've extended the free breakfast and lunch for all students. And so for the remainder of this year, all students in Clinton City Schools get free breakfast and free lunch. So that will also help.
Through June 30th of 2021. Sonny Purdue came through, uh, the USDA guy. And, uh, they have supported food service for sure. I can't say they haven't.
And then Scott has also applied forthcoming for some equipment grants, um, for the cafeterias. We said we wanted to build a surplus in the cafeteria fund, not to make money, but so we could replace equipment when it broke and I'd have to take money from instruction. And he has taken advantage of several USDA grants for some equipment, um, purchases that need to be made. So we'll hear from that soon, and we're fairly confident we'll get those.
Now, the cafeteria staff have learned how cheap I am. I had all the equipment evaluated. And we have a 30-year-old oven, more than 30 years old, at North Clinton.
Probably made better, made better than the noodle one.
Well, I had it evaluated. It looked good to me, but I'm not, I'm not an expert. And, uh, they recalibrated, and he said, "You don't need a new one."
That's great.
He was singing my song. He'd been another 30 years. So, um, I think we're in good shape with our cafeteria. You know, we're able to, to do what's best for kids, for sure. Are there any questions, uh, on those three funds? It'd be my recommendation that you approve the financial statements for November and December as presented.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or comments, questions? Okay, Kim, we're gonna have to have a roll call, though.
David Queener?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Okay, the financial report for November and December has been approved. Now we need to look at, uh, Budget Amendment, Amendment Two.
Everybody should have in their board packet, Budget Amendment Number Two. Uh, there's a two-page memo, which in itself is, uh, problematic. It's two pages. Uh, there's a one-page summary, and then there are, um, 10 to 12 pages of budget amendments, which indicates there's a lot to go over. What I've tried to do for everyone is to separate, uh, the general purpose fund on one page. I've highlighted the, uh, the big, the big numbers. I kinda used $25,000 as a marker. If it was $25,000 or more, I tried to explain it. I won't read this to you. The, the big one, obviously, is the capital project for the building, increasing the budget to, to cover that. And then we added money, um, for some payroll line items and, uh, and, um, adjusted, uh, teacher salaries, um, for, we always try to budget a little bit more in teacher salaries for anticipated growth, or changes, or programmatic changes, so we have the money to do that. And we don't think we're gonna need that anymore, so I can, we can allocate that to other areas. Any questions on the general purpose fund? I know there's a lot there. And always feel free to call me if you have questions. The next page is the federal projects fund. And this should look a lot different than prior budget amendments. What I've done is tried to, um, separate every grant and award. And I'm trying to distinguish between grant and award. A grant is something that's allocated to you. It's a set amount of money. It's based on some predetermined measurement, like number of students or economic disadvantage. An award is, is a little different, and you generally apply for award. Sometimes they're called competitive grants, and you're awarded the, the grant if you win. In general, they're all based on some predetermined factor, but an award is something you apply for. Uh, so you, you might see that term in there. Generally speaking, you've got the Every Student Succeed Act of 2015. That act covers Title I, Title II, Title IV funds. And we've just simply adjusted those funds to reflect the allocation, what we are gonna be given based on a predetermined formula, and carryforwards from previous years. So if we didn't spend all the money last year, we don't lose it. We get to carry it forward into this year.
But we usually do not know that until October or November, which is why we're doing that budget amendment to reflect that now.
The carryforward does have some limitations. You can't carry forward 100% of your grant, just not spend it in one year. Usually, the numbers are 15%, 25%, it varies, but, um, the next, uh, highlighted area or, uh, is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. Again, those are grants. You have Part B, um, which is a state personal development grant. They call it SPIDIG, um, 3.0. And that is new this year. We didn't get it last year, but I think we got it in 2019. So, um, and then we have, um, special ed grants to support, uh, state-operated, state funds operated by a local education agency, um, and Part B 915, which is your pre-K special ed. And those are pretty standard in that area. The SPIDIG is the only one we haven't had every single year. The new ones are your Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities, Security, CARES Act. Uh, we've got four there. You got your ESAR, which is the ESAR 1.0 we talked about earlier. That's Fund 931, 158,000. Remote Technology Grant, 932. That's your 29,000. That was used for one, one-to-one devices. Your reopening programmatic sport grant, 933, 40,000. That was for the classroom sound enhancement system. Internet connectivity grant is a small grant, 4,500, um, Fund 934. And that is to, uh, reflect certain needs with students that don't have access to high-speed internet. They may have access to the internet, but it's not fast enough to do what we need to do for remote learning.
As part of our reopening plan, we knew that, we did a survey of students who don't have internet in their home, or reliable internet, other, we wanted it to be other than what they get from a cellphone. In case they were quarantined or isolated, that they would still be able to participate in distance learning. And so we've, uh, we got, um, that survey indicated that about 30 families in our district don't have reliable internet other than their cell phone. So we have purchased 30 hotspots, and we have those on hand in case we were ever have to close and go all virtual. All of our students would have access to hotspots. And then we have used those as needed. As kids have been quarantined or isolated, we have individually sent, sent those home with kids if they don't have internet, so they continue to stay connected with the schools. And so that was a partial reimbursement for those hotspots.
You said only 30 families?
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised.
I was surprised, too.
And that is, oh, we don't have any budget amendments proposed, Cafeteria Fund. So I know I went over a lot. Any questions?
Okay, I need a, um, motion to approve Budget Amendment Two.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve Budget Amendment Two. Kim, can you do a roll call?
David Queener?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Merle Cross?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Okay, the approval has been approved. Just say the approval has been approved. Okay, the motion has been approved. You know what I mean.
We're with you.
Does this, you want this all on there? Don't you want to talk to them?
Yeah, those will be, we will do A and D, yeah.
Okay. Under new business requiring action by the board, we have revised school board policies on first and second reading. It's Appendix, Appendix D.
Okay, so we have several new, um, policies that we need to approve on first and second reading today. The majority of these are just recommended by TSBA to get us back in line with the, um, with the current Tennessee Code annotated. A couple that I just want to bring to your attention. We did make a tweak on the charter schools application. Um, David Queener found a good where the TSB had, TSBA had recommended. Obviously, we don't have any charter schools in Clinton City at this time, but TSBA felt that we needed to have a policy in place, just in case we ever do have an application that is presented to us. We have a procedure, or a policy that we would follow. In the first draft that we put online, it said that if we ever needed to have a charter school review team, that I would present that review team to you annually at the December board meeting. Well, we don't have December board meetings. So we just went back in and changed that to November, just in case we ever have to use this policy. The policy reflected our schedules. So that was a slight change that we made there. Um, the other one, um, I'm gonna say FF-CRA for, for, for last. The other Code of Conduct, Conduct 6.300. The only change we made there is TSBA does an annual audit of all of our policies to make sure that we aren't missing any. And, um, they are requiring now in our Code of Conduct that we specifically address pre-K and kindergarten discipline to show that we are trying in every capacity to not, um, participate in exclusionary practices such as suspension. Not that we can't do suspension, but that we have other restorative practices and, and trauma-informed practices in place for our kindergarten students. So we added that language in there to be in compliance with that law. And then the biggest change that, uh, is going to replace our older FF-CRA policy, um, is 5.3051. And if you remember, in the summer, we developed this policy to be in line with, um, the, um, with the FF-CRA leave that Trump put into place federally that said that, um, all employees, employees had 10 FF-CRA days to deal with a variety of things. If they, they could use it, if they had COVID, if they were quarantined, if they were isolated, if their child, you know, childcare shut down, if they had to take care of a family member. There was lots of different reasons that they could use these 10 days. Well, that expired on December the 31st. And so upon talking and, and, and thinking, uh, it didn't feel right for a teacher who had COVID in November to have 10 days, but then if you happened to get it in February, all of a sudden, you don't have that support in place anymore. And so this policy, what it does is, we worked with Chris McCarty. We did not adopt the entire FF-CRA package, but we did extend the portion of the package that if a teacher is seeking a diagnosis for COVID, waiting on a test to come back, or if they test positive, that any of their unused 10 days then could still be, um, accessible to them during the second semester. So it's not giving everyone 10 additional days, but we have lots of teachers who never used those, those 10 days. And if they happen to test positive, we wanted to have that support in place. So we went ahead and, we, uh, with your all's permission, through Executive Committee, we approved a process for that, but it really needs to be a procedure. And so what we're doing now is just getting your permission to put that into actual procedure, and that would last until May 31st of this year. Um, we were hopeful that vaccines were gonna come pretty fast, but it looks like that's gotten slowed down just a little bit, and it could potentially be March before teachers, uh, we get to Phase 1B. So by the time the majority of our teachers get both of their vaccinations, if they choose to do so, we're gonna, we're gonna be at the end of the school year by the time that they're considered, you know, vaccinated and, and, and protected from COVID. So that, that is probably the largest one in there. The rest is just change of mild language to get us, um, into TSBA compliance. So any questions on that?
Have they set a date for teachers? Have they shown them in the lineup where they come?
We, they moved all educators up to 1B. So they're doing 1A1 and 1A2 right now, and then 70 and older. It wasn't 75 or older. Lee bumped it down to 70 or older. So they'll take care of all of that population. And it's not really a matter, we've been in conversations with the Health Department. It's not a matter of them not having the manpower to do it. It's the dosage issue. Um, the Tennessee Department of Health told us on a call a few days ago that Tennessee is getting about 80,000 doses a week. And so you think that's a lot, but when you spread it over Tennessee, um, you know, it's just not enough for them to move as fast as, as fast as what they want to. And when you look at, um, when you look at, I think they said the population of 70 or over in the state of Tennessee is something like 300, 350,000 people. So that takes several weeks just to work through that one population. And of course, you know, healthcare providers, they're doing that as well as they should. So they're promising us that as soon as they get the vaccines, they're gonna move us up as fast as possible. But the best guess they can give is they're thinking it will be sometime late March, or late February, March, before they get to us.
I think they should have been right behind the medical.
Can't come fast enough. Can't come fast enough.
I need a motion to approve the revised school board policies on first and second reading.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Have a first and second on the board policies. Is there any questions or comments? All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Tricked you, didn't you?
You did. You did that on purpose.
See if you're listening.
We were.
You were. You did well. Now we're at the approved bonus for all CCS staff.
Okay, so we, we had some hard conversations in the spring, if you remember, when we went on retreat, and, um, Governor Lee took away the 4% teacher raise that was in the BEP, uh, funding formula. And then we weren't really sure what kind of economic impact the pandemic was gonna have. And so we ma- And so we made the tough decision to continue with step increases. We gave a legacy stipend to teachers who were tapped out. So all teachers entered the school year making more money than they did last year, but it certainly was not what we all wanted to do. So we also said that, you know, if we got into the middle of the year and we felt like that we could do something to address that, certainly, we want to do that. So I have a proposal in front of you today. There are not enough words that can describe the remarkable work that our educators have done since August. When you look from, from administrators and principals and central office people to, to teachers, to teaching assistants, to custodians, to the airmark cafeteria, to the, to the, you know, front office secretaries, to the nurses, everybody has played such an integral, important role to put forth mitigation efforts. I have seen teachers teaching brick and mortar and virtual at the very same time. I have seen teachers meeting with kids at night when they should be eating dinner with their family. I've seen them, you know, trying to, you know, put forth mitigation efforts during the day and save their planning and grading papers and parent conferences and parent conversations in the evening. We have had to call teachers on Saturday and Sunday while they have been at family events and say, pull out your seating chart, we got a contact trace. And when we do that, it's always met with what can I do? What else can I do? We're willing to pitch in and do whatever needs to be done. You know, custodians have cleaned so diligently. The front office secretaries have had to run to that front door, I don't know how many times, because parents haven't been allowed in and have helped parents navigate. Our school nurses, by golly, I mean, I can't even say enough about the parent education and quarantining and health department reports. And, and I mean, they've been in the front line of trying to decide if a kid is safe to go back to class or if it's a COVID symptom and they need to go home. And so when you look at every single teaching assistance there for three weeks between, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, they had no idea what they were going to do when they walked in the door. They knew they were going to be somewhere, but they didn't know if they were going to be in kindergarten, fifth grade, if they were going to actually be able to do intervention. And so this, this has been probably, well, it has been the single most challenging year that I have ever experienced. And, and God, God hopes that we don't ever have to experience another one like this. But, so we went to look to see what we could do. I really strongly feel like that we need to recognize the teachers for their hard work and effort that they have done. So what we have done is we brought this proposal to you and we would like to formally recommend that a one-time bonus be paid to staff members who have been employed with us since August. And we wanted to provide some consistency in the calculation of these bonuses. Certainly, honestly, there's no amount of money that we could reward them for the job that they have done. They deserve, they deserve an enormous amount of money. But we wanted to be consistent in our calculation to where we were honoring everybody and the, and the work that they have brought to the table. So what we did was we took the teacher, the teacher BS base salary and we took the teaching assistant base salary. And we went to the median and then we added two point five percent to that. And so what that equated to would be a twelve hundred dollar bonus for all certified staff. And for classified staff who meet the criteria of being with us since August, it would be a six hundred dollar bonus. And Scott, with your approval, Scott has been working and he is prepared to put that in teachers' January checks so that we can get it in their hands as quickly as possible. And then looking into next week, it's in my director's report, but it kind of goes along with this. Governor Lee, one of the bills that he is proposing is to do a, and we got the language of the bill today, so I can speak a little bit more specifically to it. He is looking at doing a two percent on the instructional component retroactive back to January the first for teachers. So that would be reoccurring money in the BEP. And then he is asking for another two percent to be effective on July first. Now, it gets tricky when you start talking about two percent, because that does not equate to two percent on our salary scale. Because as you know, the BEP only funds seventy percent of our positions. It funds zero, you know, teaching assistant, or very little teaching assistants. And it only does a two percent on the state portion of the salary, not the local portion. So it never equates out to two percent once we, but you do have my assurance that when that money becomes available, one hundred percent of it, we will roll into a teacher's salary schedule, which would be reoccurring money. So if we can do this bonus tonight, then when Governor Lee and that special session is over with, whatever that BEP increase taps out like, Scott and I will come to you with another recommendation for the salary schedule that would be reoccurring. And then we hope to address an additional salary increase, what's that BEP funding, if it becomes available in July. So that's kind of the big picture. But tonight, we would like to recommend the bonus for our staff members.
Speaking from experience, I would be going crazy right now at school. I mean, it's just unbelievable the things that you have to do. Keep people safe. Send home the sec, you know, keep the parents out, that's probably a biggie. I just can't imagine. I need a motion to approve the bonus for all CCS staff.
Some more.
With second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Ms. Price. I just want to say I appreciate Ms. Johnson and Scott for working on this. I talked to Kelly in October about this same thing, and she promised they would look at it, and they did. It's well deserved. That's, I don't know that I could say anything other than it's well deserved.
We just wish it was more.
Yes, we do.
We did.
We do.
Scott, do you want a motion on the bonuses?
Yeah, we need, did they knew?
We just.
She did a motion.
Now I have to ask for a roll call. Oh, I asked for questions or comments, he commented. We need to do a roll call, though.
David Queener.
Yes.
KK Webster.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
And I do have an email that is drafted, that is sitting at the bottom of my email. So as soon as this board meeting is over with, I will push send to inform all teachers of your all's support of that. So thank you, thank you very much. I'm sure that will be much appreciated, right, Megan? You came on a good night, girl.
They didn't know that until.
No, they did not know that.
She's our nut.
Take something off.
You can.
Okay, it's time for the principal reports. Let's do Clinton Elementary first.
Okay, actually, can Jamie go first?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to call up Dr. Jordan first, just because she's got to jet to oversee a Blaze basketball game that is occurring tonight. So we're going to let her to give her a report and leave and go assist with that. I have asked each one of the principals tonight, you know, I've kind of given them a topic to talk about. And so tonight, I wanted them just to give you just high-level information about what our mid-year I-R-E-DI data looked like since schools have been reopened. And so Jamie has done a terrific job as coordinating our virtual, virtual learning program that we have done through Edgenuity. And it would be an understatement for me to say that this has been massive. It started off with a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty kids. And we were very dead set that we held our high expectations in Clinton City schools and we did not want kids to go home and do virtual and end up getting further behind and not have the supports that they needed. So over time, she politely invited some students to return back brick and mortar so they could receive more personal support and be successful. Those have been hard conversations. She has had lots of hard conversations, but I will tell you, the parents that have landed and have been successful with this virtual academy has been amazing. And so I asked her to come and kind of speak about the academy and then about what our mid-year growth showed with our virtual students. It shows that our tradition of excellence has carried over into this program. And kudos, kudos to her, guys, she has done a remarkable job with it.
Well, you're very kind, Ms. Johnson. I do want to say it has been an honor, honor to explore this and to dwell into it. You know, we had never really done virtual learning on a large extent. But we've learned together with our parents and we've learned, I really believe the right combination of what it takes to make it be successful. Not every parent can make this work, because it has to be the right fit. And it doesn't, it has to do with effort, it has to do with time, and it just has to do with the desire to make it work. And our parents that have stuck with it have been phenomenal. And some parents just realized, this is not going to work for me. This is not what I signed up for. And kudos to them for knowing that. And calling me and saying, hey, Jamie, this is not working. But I do want to let you know a little bit about Edgenuity. It's an online program. It is extremely rigorous. And when they said it was rigorous, I thought, okay, you know, of course, you're going to say it's rigorous. It really is. The expectations are high and parents are required to do about six hours of instruction a day as the learning partner. That's intense. So it requires that home learning partner that they agreed to have. And students even do novel studies. So it really, it takes the state standards, but it expounds upon that. So also on top of that, we wanted to make sure that students didn't get behind as far as their special area classes. They wanted to get some of that content. So even while they're enrolled in Edgenuity, they are taking special area classes. In addition to that, they've been doing foundations classes for their phonemic awareness, phonological awareness in K through two. So these students have received a really robust program. So we started with a hundred and twenty-seven participants and we ended this semester at fifty-three. With no hard feelings, believe it or not. I mean, they knew it wasn't working, I knew that it wasn't working, we just decided, hey, you need to come back. And so again, it's being flexible and it's encouraging the parents and students to know when they need to come back to school. Right now, we have forty-five. Some of the students around Christmas time happened to get COVID. So it was like, well, we might as well bring them back to school, they've had COVID. So now we have forty-five. And again, I want to say one more time, it's the right fit. It's just finding the right family, the right student that does well in that situation. Nothing's ever going to take the place of in-class instruction, but for some families, it works. What is amazing to me is when we did our benchmarks, the students in reading grew a hundred and thirty-three percent from the beginning of the year. So basically, our students enrolled in Edgenuity grew a year and three months, in five months. And that's, that's just amazing to me. That is on average, that is on average. Actually, it's the median. So the, the score in the middle was a year and three months. In math, they grew a year and eight months.
That's amazing.
In five months. And that has nothing to do with Jamie Jordan, that has to do with their parents and what they've done at home with them. So the program and the materials have been fantastic. I am, I am blessed, I've made such good friendship with some parents and I get to know all the stories and, but it made me almost feel like a principal again, because I'm having these constant conversations with parents. And I'm just proud of the kids and I'm proud of the families.
That's great, that's great.
It was fantastic.
I think the key, though, is that she, she nailed and kept those expectations. And if it wasn't the right fit, she wasn't going to let them sit and slide for a semester. We brought them, we brought them back to school and they've done very well integrating back into school. But for these forty-five, fifty parents, it has just, the parents have really committed to being right there beside them and being their coaching partner. And it just, without that leadership of that expectation, I don't know that we'd be able to report that, so.
Well, we have had, of all the progress reports that are going home, every student has earned As and Bs, except for one student who I have offered a seat to come back to school. So I think that's going to be what's best for him.
All right, and offered is a very kind word. Highly suggested. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, now we can go whatever.
Okay, we're going to do the reports from principals. You can call them up.
Okay, Jenna, you want to come on up?
It feels like it's been a while since I've seen you all, so it's good to be here and see everybody. But first, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Smith and Mr. Queener from showing up at our schools to our sporting events, to personal investments in our staff. You guys are so very appreciated, you have no idea. And the rest of you that aren't just designated to our school, we also appreciate your support at Clinton Elementary. For our data, we have been looking at reading and math data for the winter benchmark. And some things that I would like to highlight is for our reading, we are at seventy-seven percent growth. So that's heading towards a year's worth. When you look at mid-year growth, you're looking to see if they hit the fifty to sixty percent mark. And for reading, it was seventy-seven. Right now, we have over sixty-two percent of students on grade level, on or above grade level in reading. So that's, that's pretty exciting. All grade levels in reading had over sixty percent growth. When we were doing our data meetings, we noticed that a lot of the tier-two kids, or what you may call bubble kids, hadn't grown as much as they would like to see. We had to adjust our RTI schedule for about the past few months, just due to social distancing, but we are starting back to our regular schedule on Tuesday. So we think that's going to help those kids grow. And in math, our growth was seventy-three percent. And right now, about over fifty percent of our kids are on or above grade level in math. And so math is a little bit different usually in ELA when you're looking at it, when you're looking at, you know, what they did really well in and maybe what they need improvements in. The reading standards spiral and the math standards are taught more in isolation. So, and some of the math, the skills standards just have not been taught yet. But all grade levels had over sixty percent growth and only one that didn't was very close. Let's see. We've got fifty-six percent, and that was the grade level that had the most quarantines. So in math, it was more of a mix of students that we needed to focus on. It wasn't just the middle kids or the low kids. Really, a lot of our kids that were strong in math came in high. So they still grew, but probably not as much as maybe a low kid would be able to grow. So, but we are pretty excited about our data. And one thing that I can say about having COVID is that, you know, we've tried really hard. It's easy when you're in a testing grade to be able to talk your data, because that's the world you live in. And so we've really tried to get K through two teachers to go more in that direction, to be more reflective on the data, you know, of their kids. And something that we noticed, it was really neat, in the past two PLC meetings that I've had, they have taken over the conversations and they could tell you exactly, you know, what they had taught. And it, it was just super impressive for us, myself and the instructional coaches, to see, you know, the K through two teachers are also, it's just been some great conversations over our data. And then something else that's been good that I want to point out about our COVID situation. While it stinks to have kids at home, one thing that I've always said about Clinton Elementary is, you know, I have a lot of friends who, their kids go to school in Knox County and they're always having to have the best bows and the best outfits. And I've always said at Clinton Elementary, it doesn't really matter what you wear, because it's all about the learning. And it truly, truly is, if you're there. So you don't really know who, you know, comes from this home or that. It's really nice to see, but I think that with getting to see into the homes, it gives the teachers a little more insight into, you know, what these kids are going home to and how they're learning. And that helps them provide even more individualized instruction. So I think that's been good in a way, just for teachers to really see, you know, where these kids come from and grow closer to their community. Dates next week, our report cards will go home, and we are having a leadership team meeting at three fifteen. On the twenty-first, we'll have an RTI meeting. On the twenty-eighth, we will be discussing more data. And then on the twenty-ninth, we'll have an assembly at one fifteen. And tomorrow, Joey's going to come by the school after a chamber. And we're going to tour the school and look at some fun ways to do some new exciting things.
Remodeling.
We are. We're excited about it. Oh, you might, ten o'clock.
Scott just started hyperventilating.
I know.
One is no cost, that's what I like to hear.
Hey, Scott, I heard he was actually getting more extension cords added.
And the fire marshal appreciates.
Space eaters.
And bright color paint on the wall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Ms. Bunsstiel?
I just want to say thank you to all our board members as well. You know, when you have friends that work in other districts, it's hard to explain to them the relationship that we have with our board members. And I think hands down, we have the best school board of anywhere in the state. And I had a great time taking pictures of kindergartners and trying And I had a great time taking pictures of kindergartners and trying to explain to them what a school board is and what school board members are and what they do. Um, but I got to talk to, you know, the older kids just a little bit more and I was telling them, you know, Ms. Price is one of our, you know, representatives and she used to be the principal at North Clinton. And they were, oh, you know, they were very, you know, excited about that. And then, you know, I was telling them about UKK and that you had children that went through Clinton Elementary and Clinton City Schools and that they're grown now. And I said, I even had some of her kids in my class and they were like, you're old.
Ms. Price sure must be really old.
So, there you go. I said, I was really young when I started teaching. But I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you do and the support that you always give and for always doing what's best for our kids. And that's what I could tell my kids one hundred percent, they always make decisions that are in the best interest of you guys, so thank you. Um, just to review our um, I Ready mid-year data a little bit. Um, our reading, we had seventy-three percent average growth as a school, which we were proud of. If you consider fifty to sixty percent being midway um, to making a year's growth, we were very proud of that. Um, some grade levels that I really wanted to highlight that made exemplary growth, second grade had a hundred and sixteen percent average growth in reading. Fourth grade had a hundred and twenty-four percent and sixth grade had one hundred and sixty percent growth on average. So very proud of those grade levels for working hard. Um, but also kindergarten, third and fifth grade made over fifty percent, which would be a little over half a year's growth. Um, when I looked at the number of students that were considered at risk for tier-three and tier-two, um, we started the beginning of the year with sixteen percent of our students being at risk for tier-three and now we're at ten percent. We started with fifty-four percent of our students being at risk for tier-two and we're now at thirty-seven percent. So that's something to be proud of for sure. Um, so that just shows that even with the disruption in intervention, teachers are still working hard to grow our kiddos. In math, we had sixty-five percent average growth as a school. Second grade had one hundred percent growth in math and sixth grade had ninety-three percent growth in math. Kindergarten first, third and fourth grade made over fifty percent growth. And again, um, same story with our students that were at risk. Those um, students that were at risk for tier-three at the beginning of the year, we were at twenty-two percent and we're now at nine percent. Um, those at risk for tier-two, we began the year at sixty-five percent and we're now at fifty-four percent. And I think that's evidence of, um, even though that doesn't seem like such a huge decrease, that's where some of our tier-three students have moved into tier-two. So they're still moving up and towards tier-one. Um, so we're really happy with that and we're going to keep working. And um, when Kelly asked us to share some successes um, of this year, it's just hard to, it's hard to come up with just one thing. And I think when you're there and you just see how we're running things as close to normal as possible, that's a success in itself. But um, one thing that I noted was, we had a collaborative day. Um, and you would think, you know, with everything going on and all the stresses and burdens that teachers are carrying right now, that professional development would probably not be the top priority for them. Because honestly, we're just all trying to keep our heads above water. Um, but we had some training and a session on um, the team rubric and how to make students aware of what they're learning and to make students aware of whether they had reached their learning targets or not. And immediately after that, I got an email from my fifth grade teachers. And they had gone home and developed a rubric that was kid-friendly, that their kids could use to be able to know, do they understand what they're learning? Do they know why they're learning it? Do they know if they've met that learning target? And I thought, wow, they're still working so hard and this still matters to them amid, amidst everything else that's going on. So they're working so hard and it's because they love our kids. And I can just share one more story. I know you said one. But just, you know, to, and it's not just educating, it's all around taking care of our kids. Um, at Christmas time, you know, the teachers turn into us names of families that need assistance for Christmas. And we try to meet all those needs the best we can. And we had a family who, for whatever reason, their form didn't get turned into us in time. And all our slots were filled, we didn't know what we were going to do. And they have five children. Um, and immediately, it's like, this teacher's like, I'm going to go buy a bike and I'm going to donate a bike to this family and I'm going to go buy this. And people were fighting over who got to adopt those children. And so teachers were bringing things in and we were getting other organizations, you know, people were like, well, I can call this person at my church. And it's just amazing that, you know, we, with everything going on, you know, we still have our priorities in place, so.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Monica.
Leann, I wanted to say something. We, uh, uh, there's a student at the hospital and I was just sitting down talking to her and she said she was from Clinton, lived in South Clinton. And I said, oh, me too. And she just could not say enough good things about South Clinton Elementary School and you and all the teachers. She's just, oh.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, I do have some, I have also some equally good news to share with, uh, with all of you. But I also want to say, you all have given so much of your time and so much commitment. And yes, we've all worked hard. And yes, we all are drudging through some days. But really and truly, if it wasn't for the fact that we knew we had the support of our school board and what they do for us out of just the, basically the goodness of your hearts, just to do for your community for us and how supportive you are, it makes a huge difference in being able to show up and be there for the kids every day. So huge thank you to you all. Um, I do want to share some, our, our growth this year in uh, ELA in math for I Ready. And if the expectation is about fifty percent growth at that fifty percent part of the year. Um, our ELA school-wide um, is eighty percent growth. Our math school-wide is seventy-nine percent growth. And um, I had a couple of highlights here. So um, in ELA, we had an area of need that was fif- uh, fifth grade ELA. It was not up to fifty percent growth. Um, and of course, we're going to, we're talking about ways to strengthen that. And then we have an area of strength uh, for ELA, was third grade ELA had a hundred thirty-six percent growth, meaning they've already met their full year's worth of growth and then beyond. Uh, some math highlights are that all the grade levels in math have higher than fifty percent growth. Um, our lowest growth percent is just, is sixty-four percent. And our highest growth percent in math is ninety-two percent. So we are really doing a great job uh, in both ELA and math this year. I, I wanted to share that one of my um, school improvement goals this year was to be higher, um, for the three-point-five percent higher in our spring I Ready than the previous year. So right now, math is currently seven percent higher at the wintertime than the year before, than the previous year we're trying to beat. So we're already seven percent higher and our ELA is already thirteen percent higher than that. So it looks like we're going to definitely meet that school improvement goal. My success story is something that I thought, nail-biting moment here, we're going to do a virtual family engagement. We're going to go in and the families will invite us electronically into their homes and we're going to do some activities. And I thought, well, it may be an absolute train wreck and anything above that's going to be a bonus. Uh, we had um, nearly thirty families that participated. We had a little over fifty in the, in the meeting. And, but a lot of those were staff members as well, but we had about thirty different family members that participated. They did a reindeer craft with Ms. Webb and her document camera that she projected into the meeting and she was showing them how to do their reindeer craft. And so they put that together, we sent home all the materials to do that. We also sent home some little hot cocoa and um, so packets and just different little things, some stickers. We sent home a little bingo board. So we had um, Mr. Glasshauser had uploaded videos uh, or presented videos during the meeting of his ORF ensemble students playing seasonal music at, at different points throughout the Google meeting. Mr. Case had um, he and some of his students also played seasonal ukulele music during the meeting. So we would get different points during that. And then we had um, a bingo game, game in which uh, one of those student winners won a big bag of candy. And then I had put all of the names of the students who'd signed up uh, into like a little name generator. And so we spun the little wheel at the end. And seven or eight families got to take home the next day, games and puzzles and things to play with their family at home. And I was, it was exciting, it was fun, it was sweet, but it was so, it was so much more than that, what, that I realized that, you know, we'll have a something at school and we invite families into the school and that's all fun. But the kids were so excited to have had all of us in their homes. And kept saying things like that, we're, you were at our house, we saw you at our house. So I thought that was kind of an interesting take on that, that I don't know that I even considered before. But we invite them into the school, but this time they invited us in. So that was a great little moment. We're going to do another one in the spring and fingers crossed it will go okay.
It was amazing. It's probably one of the neatest things that we have seen. Just the level of engagement and kids were chatting with each other and giving each other compliments and way to go, so glad you won that. And, and as Monica says, she wasn't real sure what was going to unfold, but everybody was so lovely and professional and it just was a fun, it was a fun night.
Was that over the holidays or?
You did that before the break, didn't you?
Um, yeah, about a week or so before the break, yeah. So maybe it was because our, our bingo was like a Christmas bingo kind of thing and yeah, so it was, it was fun.
We also curled up and listened to the story of Twistin' Up For Christmas via J- Jamie Jackson.
Yes.
And who was it that helped her read it?
Tammy.
Tammy Pack.
Jamie Jackson read, read Twistin' Up For Christmas.
And it was wonderful. That concludes our principal reports.
Those are great ideas and I'm amazed that the score is considering what you all have been through. It's amazing.
I'm not surprised though.
No.
Because they are the best.
But I mean, you, you would look for them not to do as well, just because of all.
During a pandemic.
Okay, our next board meeting is February the eleventh at the Clinton Community Municipal Building. And then TSBA has a Legislative and Legal Institute, February fifteenth. Do you have everybody's?
I think it's, Joey is attending and you're not able to, so it's just Joey. Joey, Scott and me will attend.
Fear, for real. You can't skip court in one day.
Okay, now we're ready for the director report.
Okay, a quick, uh, with, just some real quick updates. I won't go over all of these, but just the big ones. Um, just a reminder that our um, special legislative education session is going to begin next Tuesday, January the nineteenth. It's expected to start on Tuesday and it's expected to go through Saturday. Um, they're addressing big topics of BEP funding, what our BEP funding will look like next year. Teacher raises is going to be discussed. Um, holding harmless on accountability uh, will be discussed, a new literacy bill and then hopefully some extra funding for learning loss. Um, what we, what are we, what we are projected or what is in the bill currently is just lots of summer supports and funding for us to try to um, get kids involved over the summer to help use that time to address uh, learning loss from when we closed schools last year. Um, I want to spend the majority of our time on the director report, uh, talking about the S R two-point-oh money that is coming through. Um, this is part of the latest stimulus package that was sent from uh, the federal government. We are receiving a fairly significant amount of money for Clinton City Schools. So they prepared us to take the S R one-point-oh money and multiply it by four. Um, we were a little bit sh- uh, that, that really, I know, actually ended up being about correct. So with this grant, we have been allocated six-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, it is to be tagged and flagged for issues revolving around COVID. But the two main areas that um, the federal government wanted addressed was deferred maintenance because they know that school systems have had to put some maintenance things on hold to do, to deal with COVID. Um, and then also um, learning loss and how we can address that. So um, we actually are able, it's a retroactive grant, so we can go back to March when COVID first happened and school closures happened and recoup some reimbursement um, money for some things that we have already purchased. So I just did kind of four bullet points about uh, the leadership team gathered and, and talked about uh, what would be the best way that we could, we could spend this money. It is a three-year grant, so we have it until um, uh, July, um, June the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three to spend this amount of money. We are going to ask for some reimbursement items that we have had to do for COVID this year, such as paying for the FF-CRA days when teachers have had to take off for COVID. Um, we have gotten some extra full-time substitutes that we have asked to come in to help us cover classes. Uh, we are currently paying stop-ins to teachers who are eating with children and giving up their duty-free lunch. Uh, furniture for social distancing. We have had to replace several of the South Clinton HVAC units, so we'll ask for reimbursement for that. We are going to take the remaining balance of audio enhancement, instead of using GP funds for that, we'll uh, seek reimbursement for that from this grant. And in doing all of these reimbursements, that's going to help us recoup some of our GP money for this year. Um, moving forward, some facility needs that we are going to address is, we are to the point with our South Clinton HVAC units that when they break, they just have never been a quality piece of equipment. Um, so we are to the point that we are now just replacing those. And so as those continue to break, instead of investing a lot of money in a unit that continues to break and continues to give us issues, we are going to um, replace those units. Um, at North Clinton Elementary, there are several classroom floors where the uh, vinyl tile needs to be replaced. And then we are to the point where we need to replace the CES boiler. Um, we need to replace that before it breaks because when it does break, that is a several-month process to get that replaced. And so we want to make sure that we do that before it ends up tearing up and we're in a lot of trouble.
We've talked about that a long time, haven't we?
Yep. Yep, so it's happening, he's getting quotes on it right now. Um, for technology, we are looking, um, our teacher laptops are um, getting fairly outdated. And so we're looking at replacing all teacher laptops with an updated device and then continuing to replace Chromebooks um, as part of um, just making sure the Chromebook lifespan is five years and then they quit doing updates on it. And so every five years, we have to replace those. And so we'll use some funds to keep the uh, Chromebooks current. And then as far as instruction goes, we're going to take foundations, our fanatical, our, our foundational literacy curriculum to third grade next year. So we're going to purchase that. We're going to purchase some additional manipu- manipulatives for them. We'll use it for summer and after-school tutoring to address learning loss. We'll continue to use some of those funds for Edgenuity as needed and to address social emotional supports and then additional subs. Um, we are going to enter a partnership with NIET, which is a National Institute for Educational Teacher Training, basically. They are the ones who created the team rubric, which is what we use to drive our instruction in Clinton City Schools. And we've done two sessions with them virtually this year and it has received lots of positive teacher feedback regarding the content with that. And teachers have requested that we dive a little bit deeper in that work with them. And so we'll use some of the funds for that. So um, the application is opening on January twentieth. And then as soon as we can get the application, then we can start seeking reimbursement and spending the money. So this will come in, um, this comes at a really, a really good time for us to be able to address some things that we haven't been able to address. Um, I'll skip the bullet about Jamie, uh, Jamie's wonderful Edgenuity program because she talked about that. We've talked about the vaccination distribution day, so I've updated you on that. And then just to continue, we're off to a great start. We are not seeing a lot of, there again, positive student cases. We do have isolated cases here or there. What we are seeing is an enormous number of students that are put on quarantine due to mom and dad being positive and that is significantly hitting us right now. Um, so the majority of classes are dealing with some students being quarantined at this time. But teachers are doing a great job, they're rolling with the punches. So with that said, that concludes my report. Any questions?
We also um, have the regular chairman of the board on quarantine, that's why he's not here.
Yes, we do.
His daughter's boyfriend had tested positive and they were in the car together. So he, he decided it would be best if he didn't come. Anybody have anything else?
Other than, I just got a frog in my throat, I do not have COVID. I can feel it.